Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, October 12th, Penfield Town Board Work Session. We have with us special guests Troop 260 Boy Scouts, who are going to lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. So would you please come forward, Vincent? And please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to note that, for the record, that all Town Board members are present. Additionally, we have our Town Clerk this evening, and Attorney's for the Town, Pete Weiser. We have Directors of Developmental Services, Directors of Planning and Engineering, and Public Works with us. And as I mentioned, special guest Troop 260, with Eric Tenous is their Scout Leader. So thank you again for being here this evening. All right, we get right into our work with the approval of minutes from September 28th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Cole, and a second by Councilperson Lee. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay, roll call vote.
Cinty.
Aye.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockeden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. It is time for monthly reports, so Department Heads should be sending these in. They should have been in on the 10th of October. If yours are not in, you need to get those in now. Thanks. Move right into our action items. And Action Item A, request for an additional driveway curb cut, 107 Panorama Trail.
Thank you. To get set up, give the board a little background. I was contacted by Patrick May, as resident at 107 Panorama Trail, inquiring about the possibility of placing his driveway, but also adding onto it. As you see, on the survey map, kind of what's hashed out in red, you know, in yellow. This property is at the corner of Panorama Trail and Farm Brook. And Carrie, if you don't mind, if you can even flip to the couple pictures. Took some pictures, some standing in the driveway, as if you're kind of pulling out or backing out, just to see, there is a, kind of a, because of the location, there is a curve, you know, looking up and down the road, both northbound and southbound. So especially if they do pull off of Panorama into the driveway, it is fairly difficult to kind of back out and be able to see what cars may be coming around that curve. Is fairly minimal site distance around there. So what he's looking to do, you know, and kind of from a safety standpoint, you know, what's historically been done with the board for anything, any more than a single curb cut for residential property, you know, has come before the board to determine whether the board felt it was, you know, reasonable and, you know, could and should be accepted. Again, he's looking to be able to drive down Panorama, actually pull into his driveway, back partway up, and then kind of loop back around and be able to pull back out to give him as good of site distance as possible.
Okay. I know you might want to say a couple of words. Could you please start with your name and address, though, for the record?
Absolutely. My name is Patrick May, and I live at 107 Panorama Trail.
Thank you very much. All right, so did you want to add to anything that Eric had said?
Well, to start with, I didn't know that Eric was gonna have a couple of things and some images, so I did prepare a couple of things that I'd be happy to share. But really, I'm here to echo his sentiment. It's not a safe situation pulling in and out of my driveway. We've been there for five or six years now, and we've witnessed a number of accidents. So it occurred to me at one point to get a doorbell cam so I could watch these. And I wish that I had more of them, because there's a lot more. The driveway comes at an angle to the house.
Wow.
It makes it difficult to back out so that you're seen. I can't, I can't tell you the number of times that I've backed out and just hoped the person who's speeding around the blind corner
Okay, so...
was able to see me so that they didn't hit me and my kids. Those are just a couple of videos. Obviously, you know, those were, some of those were overnight. I don't have more videos from all the other times that my mailbox was taken out. But I am looking at stock and mailboxes, because I'm buying a lot of them. These are some photo, or some images, because, like I said, I didn't know there was going to be anything ready. I did take account of the current street, and there's 15% of the 25 mile an hour zone that I'm in that has a second entrance driveway. It wouldn't be the first one. This is a drone image of the current view, and then this is what I'm looking to do. That's my best drawing. I'm not an artist at all. But I wanted to make sure that the dimensions were in there. I had the gentleman come back and help me map that out.
So specific to your request, are you then, would you move the mailbox? Because you're talking about your mailbox getting hit.
Yeah, that was just a ridiculous trail, if you're not that familiar with how many people speed through a 25 mile an hour zone. The mailbox at this point, I stopped with nicer mailboxes that go into the ground, and I got the cheapest one I could that just pushed right in. Nobody's hit that one since. So that's great. But that's, the mailbox is currently located here, but...
I want to give the opportunity for other Board members to ask questions. So does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, actually, or maybe for Eric. Is this the property we have a temporary
Yes.
agreement on a second curb cut?
Yes.
Is that still, I know there was a timeframe associated with it.
It was five years.
Five years.
So back in August of 2021.
I was trying to remember.
We, Patrick actually did come before this board with a request to put a second curb cut, more so a temporary curb cut that actually comes off the side of the lot onto the frontage of Farm Brook Trail, or I'm sorry, Farm Brook Drive, with the idea that he would use that for trailer storage. Roughly where the cursor is, kind of on the screen, you know, there are some bushes and hedges along that. So he does have a small landscaping trailer that he's been using to, you know, take care of his property, to clean up some of the brush and debris, you know, and storing that kind of technically within the right of way. And that's why we formalized it with a temporary curb cut, with the idea that, you know, once he felt that he was completed with the cleanup and the yard work, that that would be removed. So it's nothing that's paved, it's not permanent. It is actually a mulched, kind of stabilized area where that sits.
Gotcha. To be honest, when I saw it on the agenda, I thought we were referring to that one. I was surprised to see your map, so...
So it was, and within that, we did put a sunset clause. You know, again, knowing that what Patrick's intent for that was, but, you know, again, for any future homeowner, if he were to sell the house and move, that the new homeowner, or, you know, potential new homeowner knew that it wasn't a guarantee forever, that it was, did have a sunset clause of, you know, five years.
Question?
I do have a question. Patrick, I appreciate your pictures, and it gives us a very clear of what you'd like to do. I guess my question is, I see where you have a car parked right there on the side. Did you ever, was it ever considered just to do a...
Like a turnaround on that side?
Turnaround driveway right there, and then...
Basically, where that car is, we're coming right up on the property line, it's right there.
Okay.
So there isn't enough space for a car to back in. And it doesn't look so in the photo, but right up by the house, I end up parking there a lot, because our nanny will come in, and then we've got to get in and out. And so I'm on the grass all the time, and it's a lot of dirt. I don't know why it looks like grass in the photo. It's a lot of dirt right there. And so hopefully, by having this, we'll be able to make that look a lot nicer.
And if we did approve that driveway, the other extension, the other driveway, do you have a better view coming out, as far as a better visual view coming out versus your driveway right now? Or is it the same when you're going north or south?
So heading south, heading south would be probably primarily out the extension or the current space, of which you'd be going with traffic, and so the view is fine. Going the other way, I imagine our default would be off of the current driveway, and the new space is more turning around and additional parking so that we would have as much visibility as possible off the current space.
Okay, okay.
Without knowing exactly where, you know, as I was out there earlier today, without knowing exactly where that would fit, you know, I didn't, I didn't take any more pictures of kind of what that proposed view would be. But I think ultimately, you know, if he had the ability to pull out of the driveway rather than having to back out, that, in itself,
It's safer.
Saves quite a bit of time, and it's quite a bit safer.
So I drive this stretch of Panorama every day, and I think it's entirely reasonable. And, you know, like the residents said, backing out, it's not just so much as what you can see, but it's the ability to be seen.
Yeah.
And I think, of course, always, it's pulling out is much easier and much safer for those coming, coming around the bend as well. So I would be in favor of it. I think it sounds very reasonable.
Do you have any other questions or comments? No? Pete, is there anything we need to be aware of legally with this?
I don't think so. I mean, I think he would need a, does he have a permit?
Yep, so he has sent in a right-of-way work permit. Just, again, historically, the Town Board, anything more than a single curb cut for residential property, the Town Board has wanted to weigh in on.
All right, do we need to act by resolution, though, to approve a second curb cut?
I think you should do it that way.
Yeah, okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve a second curb cut. I think it's a safety issue, as well as for the, for you as a resident, as well as the rest of the people driving on that, on Panorama Trail. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilperson Draw, with a second by Councilperson Lee to prepare a resolution approving an additional driveway curb cut for 107 Panorama Trail. Did I say that correctly? Anything you'd like to add?
We're doing it a little different. I'll actually do the resolution to authorize me to sign the right-of-way work permit.
Oh, fair enough. Okay.
So amended.
So amended. And a roll call vote?
Cinty.
Aye.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockeden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Action Item B, Allen's Creek Seeker and Project Discussion with Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. So to go through it, I'll do a little background on Allen's Creek and kind of where we are today. So this first map that Carrie brought up is kind of highlights the area that we're looking at. And thanks for zooming in. So the portion of Allen's Creek we're looking at is kind of this very southwest portion of Penfield. So you can see the vertical line on the left that goes into Brighton, to the south, that goes into Pittsford. So we've got Linden Avenue, and then we've got the two neighborhoods where the arrow is, is Shire Wood and Burrows Hills are the two neighborhoods that kind of back up to it. And then we've got Allen's Creek that runs down through the middle of it. So Allen's Creek, on a normal day, is a babbling little brook, but with a lot of development upstream, upstream being Brighton, Pittsford. Older developed areas don't have ponds in them, so we get a heavy rainstorm. There is really no detention, retention upstream, so it comes down through here pretty fast. So through the years, you know, we've had, there is floodplain through there, there is a floodway that goes over the creek area. The homes were built in the 60s, 50s and 60s. You've got older homes through there. We've seen with these flashier areas, it's creating a lot of erosion. With the erosion, it's starting to carry sediment downstream. So we've not only seen undercutting of the slopes, so there's very steep, and you can see kind of the contours on the backside of the Mobile Home Park, very steep slopes going down. And we've had it that has been undercutting those slopes as well as eroding sediment in residents' backyards. So we've had residents that have lost tens of feet of their backyard from this erosion. So in 2012, we did an initial study on Allen's Creek, took a look at it, and working with Barton Le Judas as our consultant for that. Out of that initial study, it had some recommendations, but it wasn't until after we had a major hillslide. And in 2016, where 2,000-plus yards of material plus major trees came down and blocked a part of the stream, we had to get emergency permits from the DEC to go in and remove that debris, put that out of the way, and said, "Okay, we need to do more to look at how do we properly stabilize this stream? It's not stable in its current format. How do we do that?" So 2017, we engaged Barton Le Judas again to look at the permitting process. We did a survey down there in 2018. So a physical survey of the land, the forms, the creek, the widths, and everything else, we've got all that. 2020, we submitted a joint application for permit. So that's the process to submit to the DEC and the Army Corps, showing them what we want to do with the stream. So working with, again, Barton Le Judas is our consultant, they're looking at how do we handle, you know, mitigating that erosion. And obviously, working with DEC, they want to do it through natural methods. We're looking at rock cross veins, we're looking at J-hooks, we're looking at, there's mud sills, doing root wads. So getting away from concrete armoring, we're not looking to, you know, build a sluice way, but using natural methods for that. So we've been going through all of that process with the DEC, with the Army Corps, for a number of years. We've done soil samples, we've done wetland delineations, we've done floodplain studies. So now we're kind of at the tail end of all of that permitting process. So we're down to the point of, you know, doing a secret determination for it in looking at the project and what items are listed in Seeker under Type 1 Actions. This does not meet the warrants of a Type 1 action under that. There's obviously a lot of environmental issues with it. We're working closely with DEC, Army Corps, we'll get all those permits. But as staff has looked at it, it seems to be an unlisted action, you know, within the parameters of the secret documentation. So one tonight was to kind of give the board a brief background of kind of where we've come, handle the secret determination for it, get that classified. We can move forward, then DEC will issue their permits, Army Corps will issue the permits necessary. And then we'll look to this fall to meet up with the neighbors, do a walkthrough with them of, here's what the project is. We'll meet in this room here. We've sent them letters through the years of what's, you know, kind of where we're at. It's been a little while since we've last engaged them, as we've been waiting for DEC. Do a presentation in this room. You know, we'll meet them out on site, as we've done many projects in the afternoon, evening, walk the project, what does that mean for money? What does that mean for us? And then look through the winter time to get that out to bid, get contractors to bid it, because we've got a very tight timeframe. This is a trout stream, a salmon stream. So we've got basically from June 15th till October 15th is the timeframe that construction can happen in. So you're outside of spawning season. And then we've also got long year bat season at the end of that, that you can't take trees down. So we've kind of got a tight timeframe with that. So that's kind of the process looking forward, is to hopefully, you know, meet with the neighbors this fall, get everybody on board, get our access determined. We are actually finalizing an agreement with one of the new Mobile Home Park owners. They've got some property on the other side of the creek that's down below, that's outside the floodplain, it's outside the wetlands, that they're willing to allow us to take if there's any excess material. So we've got to dig some plunge pools. We've got to remove some excess material that's deposited. They're willing to allow us to stockpile that material on their property, lay it down, topsoil it, seed it. They have no development potential for that property, so they're okay with that. We're finalizing agreements on that part of it. Obviously, they wanted to see, we did soil sample tests, make sure there wasn't anything hazard, contaminated materials. We've already done the soil samples, they're comfortable with that. So we're just finalizing, you know, that agreement with them. So kind of long-winded. But tonight's action is, if the board is comfortable with typing in an unlisted action, if you're agreeable to that, we'll move forward on the Seeker end of it. We'll wrap up our permits with the DEC and Army Corps. And then subsequent to that, we'll schedule meetings with the neighbors to engage them, and then look to move into the construction next summer.
Mark, do you need a determination of positive or negative with this?
So it would be, it would be a neg-dec.
A neg-dec.
Based on an unlisted action.
Okay. All right, are there any questions from Board members?
Is this the only stretch, Mark, that is having the issues it's having? Or is there potential for...
Yeah, we've, we've looked at, at least in Penfield. I know there is some portion on the Brighton side, and initially, we tried to engage them as it comes down into Corbett's Glen. They were supportive of our project, but didn't want to pursue anything. And at one point in time, we looked and see if there was any, you know, sort of grant funding we could get as being a two-town action doing Corbett's Glen, as well as Penfield. Brighton said, "Hey, we're supportive of you guys." They sent a letter in saying, "We support your project." But, you know, they weren't looking to do anything on their side of the line. But this piece, once it gets past here, I think it kind of flattens out a bit. It goes past Allen's Creek Valley. If you're unfamiliar with the town, Holmes is just past that. That area is pretty stable. And then it gets into the confluence behind Tops, down by Thermal Fishers, where Allen's Creek meets up with the Ronaquay Creek. That's the confluence that too becomes Ronaquay Creek, and then continues north, you know, into Ellison Park. So this 2,510 feet, I think, is about the limits of what we've looked at. So basically, looking at from Penfield line on in, and then, you know, utilizing those, you know, natural methods to try to control it, but also reengage the floodplain. It is floodplain, it will continue to be floodplain. So that's, you know, the residents' backyards are floodplain. But at least hopefully, we can contain the flow within the stream and the normal, normal storm events, larger flood events. Obviously, the stream's going to expand outside of that, and that's why we're trying to stabilize. We don't undercut those slopes and have any more hillslides. Right.
Anything else? Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion to prepare a resolution determining that this is an unlisted action with a negative declaration, correct? Requiring no further review, basically?
Yep.
Okay.
So moved.
A second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Cole, with a second by Councilperson Lee. And if there are no other questions or comments, we'll go right to a roll call vote.
Cinty.
Aye.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockeden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. Action Item C, 933 State Road and 1345 Schucraft, rezoning follow-up.
This is a follow-up item. The public hearing was conducted for both of these applications to rezone from the existing RR1 to the preferred or requested zoning district of R120. The applicants both came in or made their presentations. Public comment was, was received. And I think now we're at the point where the board just needs to determine path forward. So I wanted to bring it back to the board for discussion. I didn't add it to last work session because we had a very lengthy agenda, as it was, and figured this was one that could wait a couple of weeks. And so wanted to bring it back to you to get a sense of whether or not you would like me to prepare resolutions moving forward with the proposed zoning change, zoning map change for each of these parcels.
Okay, and as I recall, the public feedback seemed to be more concerned about actually, there, and buffering and camouflage taking place.
Correct.
But they weren't averse to the zoning change, just what might happen if there was an application before the board.
Right, and so for the towns' purposes, your only decision is whether or not to make the map amendment. Any future development of the parcels in question would be subject to their own separate development review applications. In this case, it'd be going, future development would be going to the planning board. And they would have to demonstrate how their plan is meeting the requirements under the R120 zoning. And so to the extent that they've got to meet the, you know, subdivision regulations and site planning for any proposed development under that new zoning district guidance.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
And again, just remember, that was reviewed by the comprehensive...
It was, yeah, thank you for, yeah, it was reviewed by the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and the recommendation was supported to move to the R120.
All right. Is everyone in favor of rezoning this?
Yes.
Okay. I'll have a motion, then I'll take a motion to prepare a resolution approving this change.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Ockeden, with a second by Councilperson Draw, and a roll call vote.
Cinty.
Aye.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockeden.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Action Item D, 1802 Penfield Road, Administrative Conditional Use Permit.
Thank you. So we received an application for an incoming salon to be located in available space in an existing plaza at 1802 Penfield Road. This is located in the Four Corners District. And under that code regulations, there is the provision that would allow you to consider administrative approval of the conditional use permit. I felt that this was a good candidate. This is an existing plaza, well-served by parking, both directly, you know, adjacent to the building and shared parking with the Dunkin' Donuts site. The applicant is here, if you had any questions. The application would include renovation of the existing space. New signage would be going through the Building and Zoning Department, pending future approval by the Town Board. At this time, I don't believe that the applicant had the final sign plans yet. And we've advised the applicant they'd have to come back with those proposed signage replacements for the Town Board's consent prior to getting a permit for that. It's outside of the historic preservation district boundary, so there's no historic preservation review required for this application. But typically, signage does come back to this board. So for tonight, I would be asking the Town Board to consider administrative approval of a conditional use permit. One of the conditions of that would be coming back to you for signage approval before installation.
Okay, would the applicant mind coming up Would the applicant mind coming up and just taking a seat at either one? And just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Courtney Munnings, 812 Embry Road.
Okay. This just helps us in case any of the board members have any questions about your business, and then you're here to answer them.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So I'll open it up to the board for questions.
I think typically for a salon application, one asks the questions, how many people do you have working?
So to start off initially, there will be three stylists, but a total of six.
Okay. And is it just haircuts or is it manicures?
Yeah. So I'm starting off just with haircutting, with a potential maybe to do aesthetics. I don't have anybody that's knocking at the door to come and, you know, do aesthetics yet, but it could be a potential.
And your hours of operation?
So it would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Sundays and Mondays are off. So it'd start around like 9:00, 10:00 AM and then be done by 7:00. I'd say Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then about 10:00 to 4:00 on Fridays and Saturdays.
Okay. And you seem to have sufficient parking?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm clear where you're going to be?
Yes.
The signage will be forthcoming?
Yes. So we're just waiting on the rendering for it. So we're working with somebody right now and just trying to figure out what we like and what we want to see.
Okay. That answers my questions. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question for Carrie. You had said upon review of the nature of the application and the existing environment, it would be a good use, I guess?
I was saying it'd be a good candidate for the administrative review.
Okay.
Sometimes with a conditional use permit, depending on the change of occupancy, whether it's a change in intensity of use, or if we were concerned that, you know, the site may not be able to accommodate a potential incoming business, then we would follow the more traditional path with a public hearing required.
Okay.
But in this case, because it's an existing plaza that's operated for a number of, for many years, decades even, and there's been various tenants and changes in tenancy, this felt like an appropriate candidate for an administrative review of the conditional use permit.
Okay. No, thank you for that. So I don't think it makes too much of a difference, but I, you know, it's within 200 feet of Bangs, which is another salon, so you have two very close proximity of a similar nature, but not to say that it disqualifies your use. But I just wanted to clarify what was part of your review. But again, I don't see any issues with that.
So I was thinking of that, too. When I think about it from a zoning board of appeals perspective, just sort of putting that hat back on, that isn't necessarily one of the criteria we can even take into consideration anyway if we were to grant an approval. It's more about, it doesn't fit in? Is it, you know, is it creating a detriment to the surrounding community?
Right. Unless the zoning.
I don't know that we could say that that, that being close to another salon would.
And I'm not making that argument. And I wanted to be clear, it's not to prohibit your business in Penfield. That's why I was asking the clarification. What was the type of review?
Yeah. And one of the things we look at is the zoning code, especially for this district, doesn't have distance requirements. Like in some places, you might have distance requirements for other businesses or like businesses. That isn't the case here. So that becomes a marketplace decision in terms of the applicant knowing where the competition is locally and whether or not they want to still locate in that position, for sure.
Yeah. The biggest concern really is if you're going to have extra things going on, you know? That's, if it's just hairstylists, you know, but if you're starting to ask for the manicure and the massage and all those other things, then you're getting more people coming and you got to think about, you know, Ingers, Egress. This is simple. It doesn't have a lot of people working there.
Yeah. I don't plan on having any massage or anything. Like that just takes it to a different level. I just want to keep it mainly hair.
Exactly. When you say salon, though, it can mean so many things, you know?
Yes. Yes.
So that's from my standpoint, I just want clarity on that. I think it sounds fine to me.
Councilperson Draw?
Yeah. Can I ask a question? Do you, are you operating somewhere else currently?
Yes, I am. Yes. I've been doing hair for 13 years.
In Penfield?
I'm in East Rochester right now.
Well, okay. We're glad you'd like to come to Penfield, so thank you.
Yeah.
When would you like to open?
So ideally by February.
Okay. So you got some work to do.
Yes.
And in that building right now, it was currently, Carrie, it was?
It was mathnasium.
Yes. That's what I thought. It was a tutoring center. Center, yeah. So when you, okay. That's what I thought.
It'll be nice to have someone in that space, I think. That's a great idea.
It's been vacant for a few years now.
Yes. Okay. Anyone, any other comments from the board?
Parking right now is pretty open because of Hongwai being takeout only.
Yep.
There's no concern if they were to go back to a, you know, a sit-down operation. I think we're talking maybe most six cars, it sounds like, at a time.
Yeah. Six cars, like, I would say, like, for employee-wise, all the time. And then people are coming in and out every half hour to 45 minutes. They're circulating.
Overlap, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I think because of the parking along the sides of the building, you've got more parking than you might be aware of when you're first looking at the plaza, when you first drive in. Often, the overflow parking, just because it's more visible, tends to go to the Duncan, the backside of the Duncan parking area. But the, given the previous use of a tutoring center, which have maybe even more of a turnover and drop-off and pickup functionality, felt like this would be less of a demand from a parking perspective.
Gotcha. No, I would love to see that space filled, certainly.
All right. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this conditional use permit by administrative review.
So moved.
Second.
All right. A motion by Councilperson Cole with a second by Councilperson Lee.
Cindy?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Akden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And welcome.
Thank you for choosing Penfield.
Yeah.
E, local law to revise fence regulations, Section 250-7.1. Again, Ms. Ivers.
Here we are. So I wanted to, we've talked about this before as an informational item. Andy Sevegas and I and other members of town staff have reviewed the existing fence regulations. There have been a number of instances over the past time that I've been here where we've had hold harmless agreements that came forward because fences landed where fences could not be without hold harmless agreements. They were erected in easements. There have been other issues from Andy Sevegas's standpoint as a code enforcement official having to make interpretations. And the fence language or the fence code regulations, there is an opportunity for improving clarity and formalizing the requirements of where fences can and can't go. And so that there's very clear directive specifically around easements, specifically around front yard, rear and backyard fencing, what's allowed and where. And so my request this evening would be to prepare a resolution to introduce a local law to revise the regulations. The draft regulations have been reviewed by the town attorney. And so we'd be putting that resolution forward next week to set a public hearing to consider the local law. And the draft, that resolution would include attachment of Schedule A, which would be the draft local law showing the proposed changes. What I will share with you is because of the reformatting and the changes, it's going to be cleaner and easier to do a swap and replace. In other words, local law is going to say, replace existing section with the following. But I'd be happy to prepare a quick summary sheet, at least for the draft version that gets posted to the website, that sort of highlights some of the significant areas where changes took place. This way, people could compare existing to proposed, and it might be hard to follow along. So a little bit of a cheat sheet might be helpful.
I think that would be really helpful.
Okay.
For people to see on the website.
And we've done that in the past with some of our previous local laws, and I think it's helpful for everyone to be able to have a quick view of what's changing.
Okay. So having been in that conversation, I'm not sure I have any questions about this. Do any of the board members have any questions?
No. I'd be more interested when the public hearing takes place. This is a, it's a good start to see reaction.
Wonderful, yeah. And the nice thing about the local law process, obviously, as we've seen, is the draft is presented and the town board and with public comment in mind can make modifications to that draft before adopting it. So the form that it's going to be attached to as a draft or the draft proposed legislation change will be just that. It's a draft that's subject to revision as needed.
Mr. Weiser, any comments?
I don't have any comments on this one.
Okay. Great. All right.
He's already redlined ours. He had all of his comments for Andy and I.
I know, but I just thought as a courtesy, I might ask him.
Put me on the spot.
Just wanted to see if you were awake. All right, then. So if there's no further discussion or questions, I would entertain a motion to prepare a resolution setting a public hearing for the local law to revise fence regulations, Section 250-7.1.
I'll move that.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilperson Draw with a second by Councilperson Akden. And by the way, what number local law would this be?
Oh, gosh. It's going to be number six. Well, we're going to do for the purposes of while it's under review and before it's adopted, we're going to have a blank with the, because sometimes they get adopted in a different order. So we'll prepare the public hearing notice to say consideration of a local law to make these revisions. This way, it keeps it a little bit cleaner and easier and avoids.
And if something pops in, then, yeah.
Yeah. I won't enter that into the record. Okay. So if there are no other questions or concerns, we'll just go ahead with a roll call vote.
Cindy?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Akden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. Action item F, resolution needed to allow the town to use email for the distribution of local laws prior to adoption.
So this is an item where I'm asking for permission to prepare a resolution that brings us into conformance with, not bring us into conformance, allows us to utilize email as set forth in New York State Home Rule Law, Section 20. That, in order to be able to use email as the method for circulation of the local laws that are being proposed, we have to adopt a resolution here at the town level acknowledging that. And so to our knowledge, that hasn't been done in the past. It would only be in the last few years. I think that amendment to town, to New York State Home Rule Law is relatively, I'm saying relatively recent. It's not, maybe it happened five years ago? I don't even know when it updated. But there was an updated at the state level that allows local level to use email as a method of transmission. We just need to take an action here at this level in order to do that.
There's a couple of steps and requirements that you have to do. I believe it has to be adopted unanimously. You'd have to have emails that would have to be posted on the clerk's signboard. And I think you all have like Penfield.org emails. And it's not going to save you any time on the, you know, there's still going to be 10 days, just like if it were mailed by regular mail. But I think it'll just kind of expedite the process a little bit and make sure that it's easier to keep track rather than, you know, putting it on the desk of the legislator. It's just something that ought to be done, I think.
And if I can interject, what we have been doing in the past is sending via email, most recently it's five years, but then also sending a hard copy. So this would probably eliminate that.
It would.
And save resources, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
The timing would still be the same, but, you know, it's just for, logistically, I think it makes more sense to do it this way.
And how many other towns do this? Are we behind, ahead?
I don't already know that.
I think it's, you know, half and half, quite honestly.
Okay.
So there's no really negative?
There's no negative. I think the town board has the mechanisms in place. Each of you have a town board.
Right.
You know, email.
Official email, right.
If you didn't have an official, and we wouldn't want to be posting your personal emails out on the bulletin board, but because there's a town board email that can be shared publicly, it's available publicly now anyway, it felt like a pretty.
So in the future, though, just for clarification, if someone were to be on the town board, for example, and did not want an email, did not want to receive this by email, we could still?
No, we can always.
We could always mail it. This would allow us the ability to use email only, but if a town board member had a preference and wanted to receive that kind of information in hard copy, we could certainly accommodate that.
Fine, as long as in the future, if somebody ever requests a change.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Were you going to say something?
No.
Okay. So then I would entertain a motion to prepare a resolution allowing the town to use email for the distribution of local laws.
So moved.
Second.
That's a motion by Councilperson Cole with a second by Councilperson Lee. And we'll go right to a roll call vote.
Cindy?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Akden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. That concludes our action items, but we do have two informational items to go through this evening. So why don't we start with short-term rental regulations with Ms. Ivers?
Thank you. So we're in the process of developing draft local law, number we don't know yet, to introduce legislation that provides some guidance or regulations pertaining to short-term rentals. That's vacation rentals, the Airbnb, VRBO, others that you want to fill in the blank. We're using other towns' local laws as models. Other towns have, throughout the state, have, and in our county, have adopted regulations. So we're using that as a sort of a model to look at the types of things that should be governed. I wanted to have a conversation while we're still in this stage of development, if there's any issues or concerns that the town board wanted to make sure that we addressed as part of this local law effort. I felt like this would be a good opportunity to do that. Also wanted to relay to you that we have been, only a couple of questions have popped up, but they have, about whether or not the town, we've actually gotten some inquiries from other communities. Other towns and villages in the county have a rental registry that also encompasses long-term rentals. In other words, single-family homes or two-family homes that are rented and someone other than the property owner lives there. Didn't know if that's something that you wanted me to explore at the same time, or if that's something that we revisit in the future or not at all. It just is a question, as we're talking about rental registry for Airbnb and vacation rentals for short-term, whether the town has any concerns or interest in expanding that or we save that for another time.
Has code enforcement had any issues with those type of long-term rentals where they've had a hard time, you know, finding the owner? Because I know usually it's like towns that would have like a college, and so they have a lot of like rentals like that. And so they want to make sure they know who the owner is in case they need to address, you know, correspondence or code compliance issues, so.
Yeah. That's a great, you know, I don't have a strong sense. I know from a few people that have gone out into code enforcement will come over and talk to me or to our department about what codes or regulations are in place. And so I can get a better sense of that as to, you know, whether there's major issues with, you know, properties and, you know, that may or may not be rented currently.
Are we aware of these houses? I know, I know I've been to, I've walked around and found places that they don't live there. Somebody, one person owns the property, but somebody else lives there.
Right.
But does the town have that?
We don't have that information. Right. So we don't know, we have no sense of, you know, how many private residences are owner-occupied versus renter-occupied. And that's neither here nor there. That's something that, if it felt like it was something that needed to be addressed, it could be through rental registry, like other communities have.
Yeah.
I didn't know if this board had any sense of a, you know, I know the short-term rental was, has been identified even in the previous administration as something that the town board was interested in moving forward with, which is why we're preparing those draft regulations. I also wanted just to see if, in addition to those issues, if there's anything else that we should be addressing.
I would add that to it because I think they're very similar. Vacation is one thing, but there are so many rentals out there. It'd be good to have a handle on your community, how many people are, the homeowners that own and live there versus the rental. I think it's something we should know.
Okay.
We don't have to monitor it like, you know, Big Brother or something, but it's good to know for information purposes on that level. But the other part, the vacation, that rental, we went through all that with, you know, the property on Browncroft with the short-term rentals, and we didn't have anything really in place to work with. And that's something.
Right.
That's where it all started, that we really need to do something, that conversation.
Maybe wouldn't we want to get the code enforcement officer involved in making sure that they're, I mean, that would suffice to figure out how many of these are actual Airbnb rentals, because if they had to go through the, to be, have the code enforcement officer approve them as such?
Well, there's the short-term rental piece, but then Carrie's talking about long-term. So that's like you sign a year lease for a home or something.
Right.
I'm just wondering what we do with that information, like what, why?
Right.
What's the advantage of having it?
You know, it depends, I think, like to Pete's point, in some communities, they use it for, if there's, you know, if it's a matter of not being able to reach property owners when there's either an emergency or a code enforcement issue and the people, the residents aren't responsible, the property owner is ultimately responsible.
Is ultimately responsible.
So in the instance, like the example, it was somebody from Brockport that called me and said, oh, do you guys have a rental registry? And I said, no, we don't. We're looking at the short-term rental, vacation rental. But while we're talking about rental registry of any kind, this felt like the right time to chat about it. It's very possible, you know, to move forward with the vacation rental and then see, monitor that and determine whether or not you want to add on and, and address that issue separately in a future local law update. They don't have to be done at the same time.
So I'm hearing from Councilperson Cole that she's in favor and also is anyone else in favor of a long, of developing that rental registry along with it?
I'd like to, I think I'd like to do a comment, both of them, as long as we're going, doing this. Wouldn't it be more advantageous for us to do short and a long term?
Yeah. Well, I think with the, that's something I would want to also get some input from the building and zoning office, ultimately might be the one managing the registration and what that looks like. Also what would be required as far as, you know, from a, and we'll look at that further as we're developing the rental registry regulations with respect to its, you know, applications involved. Will there be an inspection? Because that can become a major resource.
Draw.
Draw, for sure.
Right.
I know in some communities that have the rental registry, there isn't, there isn't an inspection. There's an affidavit or some other documentation that's signed indicating that the property's in code compliant and is meeting basic safety requirements that any homeowner needs to meet. You know, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, things along those lines. And then in other communities, an inspection is done periodically, every five years, every two years, every, you know, that varies from community to community. So there's a lot of variation in that registry of what that looks like for each community and what it would, you know, potentially it could look like here in Penfield if that was something you wanted to move forward with.
I know that the town of Henrietta has a long-term registry for, you know, not the short-term, but for, because they have, you know, like RIT and.
Right.
A lot of college rentals. So that's one of the reasons, I think, why they have it.
Yeah. Town of Orona quite has one as well that was instituted maybe back in 2006 or 2008. And I think it might have been either, might have been code enforcement or property maintenance driven. They're seeing a connection either between vacant properties, so they have a vacant registry and a rental registry. But I think every community is facing different issues. So each community comes up with a different way of addressing them.
Conceptually, I think I would, my early thinking, I mean, subject to kind of like sketching it out a little better, I think conceptually, like keeping, it could be like a rental registry and then part A is, is the short-term rentals and part B or title two would be the, the long-term rentals. Because it's in some ways, you're trying, you're targeting different things in a way. But there is some overlap, but just conceptually, that's how I'm thinking about it. But if that's the way, how you want it to go.
And I have heard in other towns that these short-term rentals become long-term rentals a lot. And then that there's, I think, there could be, you know, a little.
Right. I think with the short-term rental, looking at the, sort of the drafts from other places, there were limitations on how long a guest could stay, any one guest, so that you can control that as well. I think to Pete's point, we could take the current sort of working draft and add an Article II to it and look at, and at least discuss the draft and have that maybe as a future conversation, a work session before we finalize a draft local law to bring, you know, to a public hearing. Does that make sense?
I haven't looked at this issue in a long time, but I do remember this being more of an issue for the short-term rentals.
Yes.
You know.
Yeah. I mean, you know, and.
It's a priority.
I just want to make sure that all the board members have a chance to, to voice their thoughts if they have anything. My concern is that with short-term rental and getting the process moving is that we do have PGA next year. And I know that the last time PGA came in, there were a lot of places or property owners that decided to rent out space on a short-term basis.
In the town of Penfield.
In the town of Penfield, but, but, right. So I just want to be prepared before then. So, any other thoughts?
What was the definition of short-term? I know we hashed that out with the Browncroft Boulevard property, I think.
So one of the things that we'd be looking at is following the IRS's definition of what a short-term rental is, so that the property owners, so if you have an Airbnb, you've got to file taxes for income. And I believe, and I don't, please don't quote me on this, but I believe that if you rent your property out for more than 14 calendar days in a, in a given year, then you can claim it as short-term, like you have to claim it as income. If it's less than 14, then you don't have to, but over 14, you do. So we would, the, the best approach would be to refer to the IRS regulations and definition for vacation, short-term vacation rentals or vacation rental. This way, we're covering, you know, that, I think, I'd want to take a little closer look at the, how we define that in the code, in the draft code.
Probably be, you know, something less than a year maybe or something to, yeah. I haven't looked, I haven't looked at our draft yet, so.
So, I mean, and if you look at other places where, you know, I'm, my own, I'm gonna throw my own parents under the bus, but my parents rent a place every year in Florida. They, they rent for three months. So technically, that could be considered short-term. You're on vacation, but you're doing so for, for three months. Wouldn't that be lovely? We don't get to do that yet. But, so I think it's definitely, it's more than, but the, the benefit of the, of the town code locally is the town could decide what it wants to limit so that if you don't want three-month guests or six-month guests, then the vacation rental could be limited. But the long-term rental would be a different, a different ballgame altogether. We'd have to take a look at the requirements there.
Okay. Go ahead, go right ahead.
Bob, did you have any other?
I'll set things.
I understand the, conceptually, like you said, short-term and long-term being related, but for me, the, the concerns are pretty distinct.
Okay.
In, so far as persons who have long-term leases and I, or more, are still members of the community. And there's a lot less concern of, you know, the issues with the short-term rentals bring. So for me, I would want to hear more, like the town attorney said, of if we have existing knowledge on code enforcement, building.
I'm happy to get that.
Yeah, because I, I think for me, the focus should be on short-term. And I don't, as of now, without that additional information, I don't know if it's the best use of your resources or the town's resources to investigate what could potentially be a non-issue.
Right.
So for me, I would just want to hear more information to determine whether or not it makes sense to run these two full speed tangentially.
Okay. The other thing I'll share with you, just for background information, is that regardless of who lives in a property, if there are property maintenance issues that need to be addressed, the property owner is always the one that's held responsible, that, and is responsible. So if a lawn isn't getting cut, or if garbage is out, whatever the case may be, doesn't, regardless of who lives in the house, the owner is always responsible. So property maintenance, you know, continues to be pursued to the extent that it needs to when complaints are received and action is needed. So concerns are always addressed if there's something. So it doesn't matter who lives in a property. Those issues are getting addressed one way or the other. Does that make sense?
Yes. Do you feel like you have enough feedback from the board to move forward?
I do. What I'll do is I'll work with Pete and I certainly can, you know, we can come back and chat again, either as an informational item or an action item at the future. I can share with you that we do have sort of a working draft of the short-term rental registry. We do not have one for the long-term. So that would mean that we're adding that to the, to the timeline.
Well, I'm fine. I guess, you know, I'd like to see both, but I mean, I can see your, the use of your, you know, if you've already started to work on the short-term, I think that's more of a priority, I feel, and that's what the board agrees to.
Pete said part A and B. I mean, you're working on A right now. You can get that done and then go to B. We don't have to.
Right. So the, if you wanted, I mean, we can position it in the code in such a way that it would be, you'd be able to add on to it if you needed to.
Right.
If, if that became an issue or something that the town.
That's fine.
Board felt that it needed to move forward with.
Okay.
Perfect.
Very good. Thank you. And then, don't go, you're still on the hot seat for mixed-use district revision update. I'm going to leave this. I know my name is by it, but you actually are the one working on it directly.
And it's, Mark, although I gave, he was more than happy to stay, didn't seem like it was needed for this two-second update. Because there's a moratorium in place, we just felt like we needed to give the town board an update on where things are standing and so that the public was also aware that town staff internally, in conjunction with the town attorney, are actively reviewing the proposed or possible edits to both the existing regulations for the mixed-use development district and also for the mixed-use development manual that accompanies it or is sort of a resource or a guidebook to go along with it. And wanted just to let you know that we are working on those edits. We're hoping to have them in some final form in the coming weeks, month-ish. I have to look back at our timeline potentially, but we're hoping by next month, we would be at a point where we have a draft of some sort ready to present to the town board and also to, to the public, to set a public hearing to review the potential changes and just modifications to the, that particular district regulation.
So just to chime in, we actually are hoping to have that ready by the end of the month.
Then, oh, that's correct. And then we're targeting that with introduction, maybe potentially in November, the November meetings.
Perfect.
And then I think the hearing we were thinking would be after the new year, right? Like, I don't remember what we said about the hearing. We want to make sure we kind of maximize the participation.
Right. But I do want to finish up in the timeframe because we, we have it for six months and that's it.
Yeah.
Conceptually, some of the things we're doing, you know, we're taking, some of the things in the manual seem to be mandatory but discretionary in other respects. And so we're, we're trying to clarify where the discretion is and where the mandatory requirements are. We're taking the things that are mandatory and we're putting them right in the code so that it's, so you don't have to keep flipping back and forth to try to find which's mandatory, what's discretionary, what's just a guideline. And, and then as we've gone, as the planning board's gone through a number of projects, there have been some things we've learned about how these projects come together that I think requires some, some tinkering. And so we want to get that draft done. And then we do want to have, being that there was good participation by the interested parties, whether it's residents, developers, you know, prospective developers that are interested in, you know, building something in the mixed-use, to make sure that we've got it just right, so.
And the benefit to introducing the draft local law early and then setting the public hearing out late, a little bit later, gives people a lot of opportunity to read through it, provide comment, even in written form, and submit, you know, feedback and ideas as, in writing as well as at the public hearing itself. So there'll be ample time to review the, the proposed changes.
Okay. Any other questions for Kerry or Pete? Okay.
Before we move to the next item, do you, if the board is willing to indulge, if we can interrupt just the flow of things a little bit, I realize we have young scouts still here and it being a school night, I'm just being mindful if there is, if we can take questions out of turn, just so we can dismiss them early before bedtime.
Well, actually, we did, I did talk with the leader of the scouts and we're done with the meeting. So we're gonna actually adjourn the meeting and then have them come up.
Great. Okay. All right. We have no more held items. Any old business or new business?